Welcome to Thursday, October 5th, City Council Meeting, Workshop for the Month of October. Well, jump right into it. Alex Eedenberger, Anoka County Assessor. Is it Green?
Yeah.
Do you like me?
My name's Alex Eedenberger and I live at 12480 Slough Circle, West Coon Rapids, Minnesota. I am an Anoka County Assessor. I want to thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the folks for having me here today discussing Anoka County Assessment Contract. I'm not sure how familiar any of you were with the prior county assessor. I had some understanding that he hadn't been to many of the council member meetings or council meetings, so I'm glad I'm able to be here today. I'll just kind of start off and give a little presentation. I can give the slides to Cory and she can definitely distribute if you have any other questions later on. Just a little overview of Anoka County. We have approximately 136,000 parcels. We're roughly the fourth largest in any given year in the state. We're made up of 20 cities and one township. That was largest made by council council from that standpoint. Anoka County currently contracts with 14 of the 21 jurisdictions that we have in Anoka County. So we are appraised roughly 85,000 of that 136,000 parcels. Three of the cities employ their own city assessors, so their actual city staff. Those cities are Anoka, Coon Rapids, and Coon Rapids. They primarily do so because they have a larger commercial industrial base and they've had one for many, many, many years. So that's kind of just been the standard there. We would have four smaller jurisdictions that contract with the local assessor. That would be the same assessor for each one of those jurisdictions, and that would be East Buffalo, Columbus, Centerville, and Spring Lake Park. Some of the benefits of an Anoka County contract is the way, you know, from the standpoint of my office and the county commissioners, it offers full-time access to qualified assessment personnel for both residents and cities. Essentially with this, we have contracts in Anoka County you know are only going to hire qualified certified people. You know the only individuals working within your jurisdiction are the people that are hired by Anoka County. We're not, we always make, can only bill for the amount of money it's going to cost us to complete the assessment. So we always have to make sure we have enough staff to complete the assessment adequately and equally, or you know, to make sure we're equalized across all the, the entire county, whether that's locally assessed or county assessed. So in any given year, we don't have a sharp uptick in parcels. That's going to require us to hire a temporary employee to come work out in any, any one of your jurisdictions. It's always a county employee that's permanently sacked. We generally have a higher level of equalization due to some of the economies and scale that we have since we do have so many contracts under our, that we hold. And all the staff that we have only work in Anoka County. So they, if they're an Anoka County staff person, they don't have any contracts in Southern Minnesota, Northern Minnesota, or anywhere else, any small townships. They only work for Anoka County. That's kind of nice because then they only have one set of expectations and standards to follow. They only have one computer system to use. They only, you know, it makes it much easier to remember grades and making sure that your, you know, your quality grades are the same throughout the county, throughout your jurisdiction. Really increases the level of equalization that you have in Anoka throughout your city. All the staff that we have are knowledgeable and trained and they're held to Anoka County standards. We have a set of standards that we hold all of our staff to. And that's something as a city and your residents, they have something that they can turn to in Anoka and say, okay, well, you know, they didn't really follow protocol here. These are the, these are the consequences. You have a little bit more increased accountability and oversight with the different various levels of management. If you have a staff member working in your city and you get a complaint from a resident, you call either their manager, or myself, or the county administrator, or the property records and tax division manager, or commissioner. And you know that, that issue's going to be resolved as quickly as possible and as fairly as possible as well. That's not always the case when it's locally assessed. And I'll kind of explain some of how those differences occur between county when it's locally assessed versus county assessed, because there are some differences. Another big benefit is tax court. You know, Nowland doesn't typically have a lot of tax court. They haven't had any tax court appeals in the last three years. However, in this current market, you generally see the tax court petitions going down year over year. When the market kind of crashed at the height of the recession, we had 440 tax court petitions just in tax year 2010 alone. That's not counting the multiple years. So we had 444 new tax court petitions that year. Since the markets improved, since then, it's gone down. But if the market does take a downturn, you'll see that number rise back up. And that is a significant amount of work as compared to a residential lot, which typically never goes to tax court. Another benefit with that, we typically handle all that tax court work in-house. We have large enough staff that we can handle and write any of the appraisals, especially for a community the size of Nowland, any of the parcel makeup that Nowland has. We would write any of those appraisals in-house and defend the appraisal in-house. And that wouldn't ever cost you any more in our current contract. Where that really makes a difference is if you really had one that was going to go to court and if it was a local assessor that didn't have the experience necessary, they might have to hire an outside appraisal or appraiser to represent them in tax court. Those tax court appraisals can generally speaking come at the cost of the city, depending on how much it is. Some local assessors will have their certifications and they can write their own. But it really, it really depends. A lot of times we try not to go to tax court. So we always do our best to keep the citizens in mind and not use the tax, spend the tax dollars on obviously. With a county contract, for example, City of Blaine is a primary example. North Towne Mall is under petition at the moment. Obviously, that's half a million square feet or so of retail space, very complicated property. Even our office doesn't have the expertise to value something like that and defend it appropriately in tax court. In that case, the county, since they are our contract, we went out and spent, we're spending roughly $70,000 on an outside appraisal for tax court purposes, but the city doesn't have to pay that, that cost at all. It's all burden, it's all burden of the county because they are a contract of ours. And that's our decision to defend it outside of tax court. So that would be the case. If you had a rather large tax court case going to go and we didn't have the skills necessary or we didn't have the time, we would eat that cost on our end and it would not be part of the city's burden. We also have a high track, a proven track record of high-quality assessments that have approved over time. A lot of that has to do with the fact that the county assessor's office is ultimately responsible for the overall movement of the assessment. And at the end of the day, if one jurisdiction's higher law, it's the county that's responsible, regardless of whether that's city or county or locally assessed. There are some other consequences there that I'll kind of get into in a little bit. That actually is, kind of leads me to my next point, who is responsible at the end of the day? Regardless of contract decision, whichever way you guys decide, the county assessor's office is responsible for the general assessment oversight. And I also have to approve all the tax court decisions that get made. So if you guys did go with a local assessor and they do have one tax court petitioner that really wants to push it and go to tax court, if they say, I'm just going to, you know, lower the value so it just, I don't have to deal with it, it still has to cross my desk and get signed. And if that decision is going to, you know, if you have a strip mall or you have over here the restaurant, for example, if, if that goes to tax court and they just want to cut that value, that's going to make our values of other restaurant properties in rural Anoka County disequalized. So I wouldn't be able to sign that tax court case. We've had had that in the past where we've had to take over a tax court case from a local. They've decided to cut the values beyond and create disequalization among the assessment and we've not signed it. It's not the best from a public relations standpoint, just because it makes us look like Big Bad County, but it's really protecting the citizens of that jurisdiction from getting an equalized assessment and shifting that tax burden over here to the residents of that, that city. So it's really, from an oversight standpoint, that's kind of how we view it. And then as far as other, other actions, some of the stuff that I've noticed as county assessor, typically general assessment oversight would be if they're appraising someone's house that they're related to. If they're purposely valuing property is too low, that's the, they're all assessment-related issues. In some cases where we have local assessors currently working, I've gotten calls from residential city administrators saying, they did this. And I said, well, I'm not, they're not my employee. I don't have the ability to, to affect the way they're going to conduct their business. So that's actually a burden that the city itself will be taking on in the event that they hire a local assessor. Any of those professional or ethical type questions that might be questionable are really falling responsibility of the council or the city staff that are there to make sure that they're doing the right thing. I think it's been kind of running that, you know, it's, it's the county's responsibility. It's for assessment purposes only. We've had some ethical type things that have really, not with the individuals that have provided your contract, but I'm just saying it's, it's always an unknown when you should. So I want to make you aware of that. Some changes coming forward for the 2019 assessment. If there's one thing that Anoka County has not done in the past that's been well is the oversight for local assessing offices. State statute requires that we review every local assessor's books, so to speak, when we're books, not computers, as of December 1st of each year. As of December 1st, their books become available for us to review. We can review them up until February 1st. If we notice any deficiencies, we have the ability to notify this jurisdiction itself and say within 30 days, these 40 parcels need to be corrected, or these 500 parcels need to be corrected. If they're not fixed within that 30-day window, the county has the ability to fix them on behalf of the local assessor and then bill back the jurisdiction for any fixes. That's stood out in the state statute. We've never done that in the past, although we should have been. In the past, the locally assessed, I won't, I'm going to say locally assessed, not city assessed, has accounted for roughly 12% of the parcel count in Anoka County. Yet it's accounted for roughly 20 to 25% of the errors that we have to fix at the end of the year and correct that again. So it's been a disproportionate amount, which isn't fair to our current contract holders. And it's not fair to any of our future contracts holders either. So my question.
So question on that. So you're overseeing the local assessors. Do you oversee the city as well?
Yes.
Who oversees you?
That would be the, that would be the division manager, the property records and tax division manager.
Or the county?
The county administrator. From a staffing standpoint, from a oversight of assessment, it would be the Department of Revenue. That is our, this is the oversight agency that oversees all assessors across the state of Minnesota. So.
Okay.
Little different, little different there. And the only city that's really different there is the city of Coon Rapids. They operate as though they're a smaller city, but they kind of fall in line with the rest of the county for equalization purposes. They wouldn't want one house in Coon Rapids that borders a house in Blaine, essentially the similar market, to be greatly valued with great difference. So they, they generally fall in line with the rest of the county, but they are a city of the second class. So they technically can, they could have their own camera system or assessment system. They could have their own rules. They could kind of be a little island in Anoka County, if you will. Blaine could be so as well, however, their accounting contract at this point in time. So. Like I mentioned earlier, tax court, it's still our responsibility at the end of the day to ensure equalization in those tax court decisions or settlements. So every one of those decisions still has to come across my desk and get approved by me and the chief deputy assessor. And then some questions that regardless of decision, I would be asking any local assessor coming into our county that I would assume most cities would want to ask as well, is how many cities and townships do you or any person working as part of your operation handle with regard to assessment services? All these questions kind of build on each other. You know, where are those cities and townships located in relation to our municipality? How many parcels in total do those cities and townships encompass, including the municipality in question? How many people do you employ in your, on your, listed on the contract as well as doing the assessment services in those areas? You might have one person on the contract, but four other people working in the city to help complete and fulfill that contract that you might not be unaware of, that you might be unaware of. Are there any that are dedicated specifically to your jurisdiction to complete the assessment? One of the things that I've been aware of since we've done several meetings together is they typically say Anoka County handles their business by expecting all the work to be completed in the spring and summer with the fall being lighter, lighter workload. That is not true in the case of Anoka County. All the jurisdictions we have in this county are rather large, given our current parcel counts, and they have a number of new, quite a bit of new construction and things like that. All that new construction, permit work, sales ratio analysis, land changes, all that takes place in the fall. And it is time-consuming. It's not something that you can just blow a lock at the end of the year. It really is something that's going to require your attention all year long, especially with new construction. Because you have to pick up as close to January 2nd as possible as what the, what the status of those construction projects are. A prime example would be the new construction of the outdoor storage out there. You want to see that as close to January 2nd so you can make sure it's valued appropriately for the next assessment year. But if you're not in the county or you're somewhere else, it makes it more difficult to do so. All the people that are, aren't listed on the contract, are they licensed? Do they have the experience? Are they familiar with the Anoka County standards as to what we expect to be a valid quintile inspection, permit inspection? And then based on the number of parcels and assessment staff working in that area, explain how you intend to complete the assessment to meet state statutes. Typically, any one of our staff, which we have 10 of residential appraisers and three commercial appraisers, the residential staff can see anywhere from 1,300 parcels a year. We're required to see 20% each year. They can see anywhere from 1,300 to 1,700 parcels, roughly. Obviously, there's a big difference when you're in Colby Heights on 75-foot lots. You're not, you're parking your car and you're walking house to house. It's very easy to hit 1,700 parcels in your quintile. Big difference when you get up here in Nowland. When you're hopping in a car, walking around, or you know, you're walking around the house, hopping back in your car, driving to the neighbor's house, knocking on the door, walking around, hopping back in your car, driving to the neighbor's house. It's a lot more difficult when you get into the rural areas to achieve that 1,700 parcel count. And if it were 1,700, I would question whether or not they were doing it appropriately. So if you're, that's a good number, like a good number basis as to how many parcels per person are you currently completing? And are you meeting those requirements set forth by the county? Regardless of which county you're in, you want to meet which, you know, the county, this county, you're more concerned about the citizens of Nowland and meeting Anoka County standards as far as assessment is concerned. So there are all of some of the questions that I will be asking if we pick up any new local assessors in this county. And I also will be asking our current local assessors the same question, because like I said, next year we will be rolling out some new guidelines. So when Anoka County, when I said Anoka County's typically failed in the past, it's kind of without oversight. And I'm a firm believer that you can't really change your ways unless you clearly lay out what your expectations are before making any of those changes. So this next spring, our goal is to actually roll out, you know, Anoka County assessment expectations in writing with regard to quintile, new construction, appeal season, and how they go about handling it. And then how our review is going to be conducted at the end of the year. We're going to kind of use this year as a, as a gauge. We're going to verify roughly 10% of each person's quintile requirement and kind of spot check that 10%. If we identify issues, we'll expand that search beyond the 10%. But we won't be billing for that at this point in time. It'll be next year once those expectations are laid out upfront in the beginning of the year and then moving forward. That's really what's the most fair as far as the rest of our assessment contracts are concerned. And it's not just the local assessment contracts that are going to be that way. It's going to be all staff. It's going to be our staff, the city staff, as well as any local assessment conferences. Our real goal here is to make sure equalization in the county gets better over time and hold people accountable for the work that they're doing. I have questions as the next topic. I know, I believe, was it Mary? I think you had a question in an email about the contracts. I did send Cory a breakdown of the costs. I know an email went out to most city councils that said they'd save roughly 20% based on the numbers within the contract and the current parcel counts. That's really, it's, it really depends on how much tax exempt parcels are there. For example, Old Grove, it would have been roughly $10,000 more to switch, given the current tax exempt parcel count they have in their, in their city. And I believe you had pointed out the utility properties. So there is, there's a difference in utility properties. And like I said, that parcel count changes from year to year. So currently, utility, most utility properties in Anoka County are state assessed, meaning primary example would be the railroad. See, the railroad runs through Nowland and they own, and it runs through the entire state. So they are in 66 counties. That's a potential for 66 different assessments, just the property within that county. Makes a name here for the railroad, makes a name for the state, and for tax court as far as appealing. So that's all state assessed property. We get a list each year of saying, here's our operating property, our utility operating property. That operating property is state assessed. The railroad and power companies and utility area, pipeline companies own additional land as well that's not part of the operating property. Those properties are the ones that we are still responsible to assess. And that can change from year to year, because they really are self-reported at that level, the power companies. We're a hand over, you know, so it, it has the potential to change. That's why we leave it in the contract as in states. Right now, there's three in Nowland, but they're not billed because they are state assessed property truly and they have not changed for years. If it never did, in our, in our invoice that we would send that next year, you would see it listed as a line, a separate line item called utility property. And then I would likely, you know, put an initial comment into that. Last year, parcel number blank was no longer state assessed utility property. It was now county assessed utility property.
And then just, just to clarify, I did email Cory because of the memo that came out that said they're not currently charging for the tax exempt or utility parcels, but in their contract, they still had verbiage in there on the utility parcels. And so to me, it was not.
Nope, that makes perfect sense.
So I just wanted clarification.
Nope, that makes perfect sense. And we have other jurisdictions too where pretty much every year we have one or two parcels. And we typically use the same county attorneys of us who draft the contracts, leaves them all the same. But there is a purpose for leaving it in these other contracts because throughout your five-year cycle, they might pick up one residential house along a railway. Well, they're not going to utilize that as operating property for three years, so they're going to lease it out. Well, that's not railroad operating property. That's real property that we have to value. So we have, have a means of building that, that specific parcel. Like I said, any given contract cycle, it's written in the contract that we have the ability of the fee from year to year. Over the past one or some years, we've never done that. The only time we would ever do that is if you had a really large development or expansion that would require us to add additional staff to your jurisdiction. Couple cities in Anoka County are looking at bidding for the Amazon project, for example. If Amazon came in, that would be a huge addition to any one of our cities. That would likely require us to add additional staff for that city. And that's what that's there for is to say, okay, we're going from one staff to four staff. And that's really what that's, that's it there for. So any given year, it's always been the parcel change, the shift from residential to commercial. At least I want today that John and you all can come with, that was residential, where our appraiser was out there this year. However, in the past, it's been used as a commercial garage, like a repair garage in the back of the property. So it did have a small commercial segment on it. Since it's only a small commercial segment, it's, it's still being billed residential. It's only the properties that are predominantly used as commercial that are billed as commercial. So any of your hair cutting places inside of a house, you know, technically, that's a commercial classification. We will still value that property as residential as tied in the highest and best use. And a portion of the property will be taxed at a commercial rate because it's used commercially. Any other questions?
How long have you been the assessor?
I've been the assessor since last July. And I've been with Anoka County for the last five years.
July 1st of 2017?
2016.
2016, yeah.
I was, and I've been with the county for roughly five years. I was assessment compliance coordinator before that. So I was responsible for the overall movement of assessment, doing the sales ratio analysis, figuring out which types of properties need to go up, which ones need to go down, and really ensuring that at a level of equalization throughout the county level. That was my responsibility. Before that, I worked for the city of Minneapolis. And I did a lot of the residential stuff in north and northeast Minneapolis, as well as some of the high-valued tax court residential stuff down in southern Minneapolis as well. And then before that, I was actually a fee appraiser while attending college and everything else. I've been doing appraisal for roughly almost 13 years.
So you find a difference between Anoka County and Minneapolis?
Actually, between that and Columbia Heights, not a ton. But with Anoka, you know, I'm, I'm originally from central Minnesota. So, you know, rural Anoka County is more like home to me. I'm from a town of, you know, 3,000 people. So it's not, you know, this is more, more my speed than maybe downtown Minneapolis that I have here. So definitely, definitely more at home in the smaller rural communities than I am downtown, for sure. And we do have a wealth of knowledge in Anoka County. We do have Diana St. Hawk, who some of you might know, if you've been around for a while. She's the chief deputy and she's actually been doing assessment work in Anoka County for the last 38 years. So you name a property in Anoka County and she's either likely dealt with it, or been there, or heard of it. She will give you, she's like a walking history book of Anoka County. She tells you what's happening, or what's happened on that property for the last 20, 30 years. She did residential, commercial, tax court. She's really a, you know, a vital resource there from that standpoint.
What's your succession plan for her?
My goal for her? Well, she is eligible to retire, well, she's, she's, she's only 56. So she's really not all that old. She's been doing it since she was a teen. My goal there is to, is to retain her as long as possible. I keep joking that she'll be around for another 10 years, you know, as the self-fulfilling prophecy, but she keeps calling me, I'm crazy. My goal is to essentially shift some of our CI appraisal work. Right now, we have slotted for four CI appraisers. My goal is to transition one of those, because our tax court already is decreasing at the moment, to potentially transition one of those positions to be more principal appraiser instead of senior appraiser. With that, that person will gain some additional experience from the management side. So for the next year and a half, two years, they can sit and work directly with Diana supervising the residential appraisal staff, which is a big group, 10 people. There's a lot of staff for her to supervise. So they can kind of learn some of the tricks of the trade as far as managing staff and how that goes, as well as still get their feet wet on the apartment tax court world, because that will still be part of that job description. They'll still have their, that also takes them all around the county. So they're still aware of what's going on, not just in Columbia Heights Commercial. And they kind of lose touch with Lynwood and St. Francis and Nowland and Old Grove. This gets them all around the county, in all of our jurisdictions. And so it really would make for a well-rounded individual, and that's from that standpoint. So that's kind of my goal, is to transition someone into that spot. And then long, you know, if I had my way, I'd like to actually keep her. If she retires, I'd like to kind of, you know, I would, I'd love to bring her back. If she did want to retire, I'd love to bring her back part-time or at some, at some form of capacity so that we can at least hold on and continue that knowledge transfer. Because she is definitely a vital resource. She is phenomenal for everyone who's at the county there. She really knows her stuff as far as Anoka County history, which makes a big difference when you're appraising properties. A lot of the names she knows. So it's like from Nowland or St. Old Grove, oh, I know them. You know, I dealt with them in the past. So it definitely helps a lot.
Question I have is how many cities have renewed their contract with you so far?
We have Old Grove. Bethel's decision is being made tonight, I believe. I'm not sure. So Old Grove, Ramsey, Andor, Blaine, Lexington, Lynwood, Lionel Lakes. Circle Plains goes to vote next week, I believe, as well. And I'm fairly confident that one will be just fine. And I'm also meeting with St. Francis next week. So in Columbia Heights as well, making a decision, I think, in the next week or two weeks.
And what were you hoping for the decision with Nowland?
As long as we have it by, you know, by the end of the year, because that's when the contract runs up.
Okay.
The last five-year cycle when we had this. Like I said, the prior county assessor, I think it was my opinion that maybe he wasn't as on top of things. We ended up working all the way into March or May of the next year without a signed contract in one of our jurisdictions. So had they signed with that, you know, with a different company, that would have been four months' worth of work that we would have been lost out, you know, we really would have lost out on. So my goal this year was to get out, A, meet all the city councils, because I think that's a valid, you know, that's a valuable aspect or, you know, asset to have, since we really are here to work for you guys. And I think it also gives me the opportunity to kind of say, you know, we are here to work for you. So if you have open houses or things like that you want us to come to, that introduce us to staff or to make us more, you know, visible, definitely give us a call. We're definitely flexible, willing to come, show up at some of these meetings. Our staff, we offer flex scheduling, so it's not, you know, 8 to 4:30 is the only time you can schedule inspections. Our staff, a lot of our staff Our staff, a lot of our staff work seven to five-thirty, where they, and they have one day off. But with the multiple staff that we have, it's not that there's no one available on Fridays or no one available on Mondays. We have additional staff that can come out and take a look at that property on Friday. So we had staff that accept appointments at seven o'clock in the morning and they just let us know, hey, I scheduled this appointment and now let at seven, I'll be in after that. Not a problem. Or I've got an inspection at five forty-five, because that's the only time they could get in or get me in the property. I'll make up the, you know, I'll leave early on a different day, that's fine. We're flexible, we realize people have lives, um, we have our own lives too, so it's, um, we definitely get that from that standpoint. Any more questions? I believe Hamill Lake is making a decision next week as well. Like, that's the only other one thing that I missed. The other, like I said, the other contracts are locally assessed or, or city assessed or locally assessed.
And those other ones that decisions have been made already?
Uh, those contracts run at different timeframes. Ours run at five-year timeframes because our, our requirement is to see every property once every five years. So our thought process there is we want to have the ability to see and meet that requirement by state statute every five years. We wouldn't want to cut it in half and then leave it open for someone else potentially, to have to finish our quintile work. So those, typically the locals that we have, they run on a three-year cycle. So I believe some of them expire next year under my understanding. We're talking to the city of Centerville, city administrator, and the city of East.
And are these rates the same in all the municipalities that you?
Yes.
Don't get a discount because they get to drive through beautiful Nalden?
No, unfortunately.
Is people fighting over doing the assessing out here?
Uh, well, we, you know, it's, it's surprising with ten staff. We have a lot of, some staff, a lot of staff are way more comfortable working out in the rural areas. They prefer that, that, you know, or they're, and they're way more comfortable appraising agated properties as well. It's a little different when you're out here, you have to drive down someone's driveway. It's a little bit more intimidating to drive some, down a driveway where you can't see the house, to knock on the door. And whereas in Columbia Heights, you know, people can see you coming from eight doors down, walking around. So it's a little, it's just a total different aspect of, of the county that we have. We're kind of unique there as far as having one interior room suburb and then some that are ruralized, Lynwood and Nalden, you know, Grove and St. Francis. So it's, we're really kind of unique that way. Not, you know, Hennepin County kind of has some of that when you get to the far western edge, but even that's not really the same.
We got lots of dogs out here.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's for sure. But those, that's, you know, you learn to deal with that as well.
Yeah, Ken's been great.
Yeah, he had, he had one individual I know, um, yesterday when he was there knocking on doors and she was not happy he was there. But he, she was very upset and he gave her his card, gave her my card, and he told her, he's, you know, he was in a, we're, we always have county vehicles as well. That also helps, the fact that it says Anoka County right at the side of the car. There's a license plate number, a unit number, so if there is ever questions, they can call and they can generally figure out who it is. It's not just a random vehicle showing up. But I know she did take the license plate number and things like that. He called me, gave me a heads up and said, hey, she was not happy I was here. You know, this is her name, this is the property, this is where the property is roughly located. I have not heard from that individual yet, but sometimes we do. And that's going to happen regardless of who you have doing the assessment. There's always going to be some that are questionable and rightfully so, already have a random person knocking on your door. We do our best to educate and make them aware of, of why we're there.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your attendance. Turn the mic. That's yours. All right. It's gone to proposed subdivision ordinance amendment. Any questions for Liz on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Just to clarify, Liz, so the fees aren't changing necessarily, but we're, we're assuming that we're not going to be using as much of the escrow?
That's correct. I, I have the ability to reduce that escrow amount, so I would probably reduce it to about five hundred, half of the normal amount if we were doing it this way. Because then, yeah, our fees per hour would be half too. And you'll notice I put fourteen days in here for the decision on the, uh, ones approved administratively. So that would save, you know, probably good, good three to four weeks.
We do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ingle.
I'm wondering if there's any interest on council to be, um, made aware of the application in the split. I mean, I would like to at least know, um, that they're occurring, so when the application comes in, if we can get copied on that. Certainly, just so that we, we do know.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things that came out with planning and zoning is they're saying, oh, gee, we're putting ourselves out of business. Well, obviously this is limited. But the, the one thing that was before planning and zoning last month, wouldn't have come before then. Well, the question was put to you, would that have come before then, had this been in place? And you said, no.
Right.
It had the situation.
And I, I informed the, that applicant of that situation and asked him if he wanted to wait or if he wanted to go forward, and he chose to go forward. So, and that was him that was here, so I apologize for stepping in late, but he had some questions.
All right, any other questions on the? So what do you, what do you think the real net savings to the resident is going to be? Obviously, you don't have to come with our planning and zoning, but how much money, how much difference is it going to make?
Well, what I envision is creating sort of a checklist for myself that I can just say, yes, you know, they meet this, they meet this, they meet this. And then, you know, basically sign it and date it, saying it was approved on such and such a date. So I don't have to write a full report to bring it here. And there wouldn't be any findings either. So I, you know, you're saving at least half, if not more.
And, and what rate, is this something you personally would be doing and what rate would it be done at?
It would be done at the sixty-dollar rate, which, the same as I do code enforcement and just the general day-to-day stuff versus the private rate of one-twenty.
Do you have a checklist now when somebody comes in, so that they have some idea of what their, is required of them and what the potential costs are?
Uh, we do have a checklist that tells them what plans are required, what should be on the survey. And I always get asked, you know, well, how much does a survey cost? And I can give them, you know, a rough idea, but, you know, I guess it's not my job to know. I try to help them figure it out and certainly tell them what the fees are and, you know, and.
And I'm thinking more for the, the city fees, you know, the, things that are typical and the type of, you know, proposals that they're making. Typically what the city fees will be, if they're getting a survey, if they're getting things that need to be done, that aren't part of your office, need to be done on the property anyway. I mean, that's, you can say my best guess is, but it's up to your surveyor and everybody else. But, but as far as our city cost, do we have a checklist for the type of things that, that you require? And then what typically the cost would be for your services or city services?
Um, well, the fees are on the application itself and the escrow, and then they'll typically ask, what's the escrow for? And I'll tell them, you know, my review and I guess it's not in, I, it's not written, you know, what the hourly rate is, if that's kind of what you're asking, but they, they will typically ask.
Couple of times people have come and they've been surprised. They knew there was going to be a cost, but they were surprised at the amount.
Okay.
You know, what I'm always trying to do is let's minimize surprises. How do we say, here's everything we know upfront, here's the worst, you know, worst-case scenario, but typically it's here, but it could be this. If, you know, if you're doing some of this, it's going to be lower. If you're doing it, you're going to pay somebody else rather than us. If you're going to ask us to do it, the fee's going to go up. But try and give them some idea, because whatever we can do to minimize surprises when they get the bill from the city.
Yeah, if, exactly. And I do say, you know, I will estimate, um, you know, the planning report and findings costs. And I'll say typically you'll get a little bit back. I said if, if we go to an extra meeting, if there are issues, if you have to revise plans, you know, we might go over that escrow. And, and, you know, this means you are signing that you are responsible for all costs, so that I do try to explain.
Do you have any, any records of how often we go over the escrow?
Uh, yeah, we can look it up by total bill amount.
I think that would be good to know, so how, how accurate we are with the escrow. And if we're going over, is it sufficient? If we're not going over, are we asking people to shell out things or if we're right on?
Sure, I can ask. Do you, how many years back do you want to go? Do you think, three maybe?
Three seems reasonable.
Uh, just for, do you want a kind of a variety, like do IUPs and CUPs? And then maybe, I don't know, if the lot splits will be other, you know, by category sort of?
Yeah, that makes sense, so that, you, you know, you're always looking for, I'm always looking for trends. It seems like we're right on on, on this, but we seem to vary significantly in a different category. Or we're generally low and that's good. We like people to get money back.
Sure, it'll be easy.
Anything else on the ordinance 2017-03? All right. Code enforcement, update requested direction.
So I did speak with Mr. Guyer. And he has gotten rid of the majority of his animals, uh, the exotics, all exotics and all regulated animals. Uh, we only spoke by phone, so the question to you is, do you want some sort of a site inspection? Or are you happy with taking his word for it, um, that he's gotten rid of these animals? And he, you know, verbally told me what is on the chart, mostly just the farm animals, which are considered agricultural. So in my opinion, he is in compliance at the present time. Based on what he's told me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ben here.
Liz, if this was anybody else, would, would you typically go out and do a site inspection then? And then in my opinion, he should not be treated any differently than anybody else. It should go through the same process, same steps.
I agree. I, that would have been my, uh, recommendation. I, you know, understandably, he's upset and, um, I just wanted to be sure that you were on the same page.
I don't think the city's out to shut him down or just to, I, I think he probably don't realize this, but it's just, if he comes in and becomes legal, gets a, a permit, then he's good. As long as he abides by them, regulations are set up for his IUP, then he's good, he's good to go for the future. And it covers him when more plans come in. So it's going to be, it works for him just as well as it works for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Understock.
He is long, well, he, what he told me was he's only going to take the farm animals off-site to have like a petting operation. So, um, if he stays within this number and he's not bringing people to the site for birthday parties or anything, then I would say, um, he doesn't need the IUP. But if he's having people or employees or, you know, he probably, I'm sure he doesn't have employees now, because he's got less animals to take care of. So that's the way, the route I would go. Uh, based on what he's told me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ingle.
I, I have a concern in that, um, at the September meeting, we had conversations on it. And our motion was to, um, have you go, have you speak to Mr. Guyer. And in lieu of that, he got a letter dated September thirteenth, um, outlining violations, potential fines, and then requesting a meeting set up with you. And I, I believe he overreacted to it and, and started to, um, disperse his animals. I, I wish we would have just had a conversation with him first, um, because there may have been a way to allow him to continue under an IUP with some of what he was doing. But I think this letter, um, in lieu of a phone call to have a conversation with him, um, pushed him into taking a step that maybe was not needed. And that, that bothers me. And our, our, our direction was to, um, to the planner stock and talk with, with Tommy Guyer about setting up an IUP. And I, I don't get that from this letter.
Well, he was asked to call, he did not call. When I did call to speak to him, he indicated that he just wanted to be done with it. You know, he was frustrated, he, it's almost like he didn't stop and consider, you know, what he could do, although he must have figured out how many animals he was allowed, because he's right at the five-acre mark. So I guess I'm sorry that you feel that way. I, that he could have reached out as well. I was trying to kind of outline the options for him, but.
Look, I mean, our meeting was September twelfth. The letter you sent out is dated September thirteenth. And I'm glad you're efficient and got things done. But again, I, I think our direction was that to, for you to have a conversation with him. So maybe more appropriate would have been a phone call to say, let's sit down and talk, um, rather than sending him something with, um, violations outlined and such. And then, you know, then saying, call in. That could have, um, I don't know, I just think it maybe could have had a better outcome, I don't know. I.
I don't know either. I, you know, there's, of course, a reason for the letter is to get things in writing and to document what was either recommended or what your options are. And A, if you're not sending a notice right away, then you're kind of wasting that time. And A, if you're not sending a notice right away, then you're kind of wasting that time. I mean, I guess I could have spoke with him and then sent the notice, so if that, you know.
I think it's important to waste that time, I guess. And I don't count it wasting time, it's investing the time, because we, first of all, in the earlier meeting, in the springtime, determined that the complaint really was a USDA complaint, was not a now-then complaint, and the person complaining was not a now-then resident. And so we didn't take action at that time. But when we did, when it did come up again, we were told that we received a complaint from a now-then resident, and yet when I asked who that resident was, nobody knows who it was. We don't have a name, we don't have, we got anonymous complaint in a mailbox. So to make a statement in the letter to Mr. Guyer saying it from a now-then resident, when supposedly we don't know that this is now-than resident, is misleading or not factual. The intention, I think, of the council was to, first of all, see if he even has an intention of running the business. If he's going to keep running the business, then an IUP was required, but that was the point of the conversation. To get a letter and say potential violations and potential fines is pretty intimidating. It's not a conversation, it's not, do you plan on running a business? Then you've got to, you've got to apply for an IUP. If you're not running a business, here's the criteria, you need to get rid of the exotics, you need to pare back your farm animals to the appropriate size for your property to be consistent with that. But, but to, to run with this complaint on somebody who's supposedly complaining he's being treated differently than others, and yet we didn't even know who this is. And to take something that seems this stern and to, you know, you get it, and it's potential fines, I'd react too. I don't, every time you look down at each paragraph, it's another $200 fine, and it goes up, obviously with the violations, if it's not responded to right away. I don't think we want to treat them any differently. I would like to treat all of the residents with conversations first, and then say, okay, if that's what you intend to do, then the city's response is, you have to have an IUP. That's a home business, the way you've proposed it. That's too many animals for this. And to have that conversation and then document that, okay, I've had the conversation, it was congenial, but we disagreed on, you know, he doesn't want an IUP, then he has to have one or else. Or as, as he did here, get rid of all the animals. In this case, he had indicated when he was in here in April, or whatever month that was, that with his health, he wasn't sure that he wanted to continue the business anyway. That was the purpose of asking, are you going to continue the business or not? And then it would avoid the, what appears to be, if not threatening, you know, a little more intimidating. And so, you know, back to, if we put in writing that the city has a second complaint from somebody, a now-than resident, and we don't know that, that should never be in writing. So if we don't know that that is, we're taking somebody's word, I'm a now-than resident, but we don't know that, I think that's wrong to put that in writing. That's either misleading or, you know, an untruth.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, regardless of the complaint or not, we all are well aware that he is in violation of ordinance, correct or incorrect?
And, and the, the instruction from the council was to have that conversation.
Correct or, so what I'm saying though is, you keep going back to this anonymous complaint. Realistically, you can throw that out the door, because we're all aware that he's in violation of our ordinance, period. So, and again, we could have handled the situation a little bit differently, I'm not disputing that. But regardless, just like anybody else, if we know, regardless of a complaint or not, that somebody's in violation of our ordinance, we need to address that issue.
And, and it's my opinion, we address it in a conversation, not in a threatening citation.
And again.
And that was when this first came up.
That's your, I wasn't finished, number one. Number two, that's your interpretation that that's a threatening letter? You know, it's, Liz's interpretation to get a conversation going. As a council, then, we need to obviously come up with, you know, what are our expectations, just like the county assessor said. We need to outline what our expectations are and what we deem that we should be doing. You know, so don't, and again, this is a circumstance where we all know that unfortunately, this person is in violation of our ordinances, and he does operate a business out of that house, and he does have parties there, I've driven by and seen it, and he has too many animals, so it's something that we do have to address. How do we address it?
Well, and, and obviously, he did address it, if he's got rid of all the animals.
But that was his choice to handle the situation the way it was as well.
And, and in my opinion, what I understood that we asked as a council was to do that conversationally. And, and when this first came up, when Andy and Liz first proposed the citation process, and the initial was, if you see a violation, go with a citation. And we've always gone with a general letter first. It's come to our attention, there's a violation, you know, what can you do about it? Contact us. And most of the time, we get cooperation. And we save the more heavy-handed approach, where we throw in the violation, make an actual citation, when we're not getting any cooperation.
But nowhere in that letter does it say that we're citing him, it's just saying there's potential to.
Mr. Mayor.
Lanis Stockman.
Can I please clarify? Yeah, that is a notice, it's not a citation, and that isn't my standard notice. And keep in mind that that was drafted based on input by Mr. Glazer and the other city attorneys. There has to be certain language in there so that we have the authority if we need to cite someone. So Mr. Guyer was not treated any differently, and I do use that letter as a, you know, kind of a, hey, give me a call kind of a thing. So, you know, it's difficult, people work during the day, whatever, it's, you know, not always possible to just knock on the door and talk to somebody. And in addition, I was at Mr. Guyer's property back in May and discussed all these things with him in person, so it's not as if he didn't, you know, understand or know these But that is the standard letter, so if you're not happy with that, or if you want to start differently, we need to revise our administrative violations section then in the ordinance, because that is step one, it is the actual notice.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
And I, I get where you're coming from, Ms. Stockman, on this, but again, our direction was for you to have a conversation with them.
Okay.
And we didn't direct you to send out an administrative notice, which you've asked to have that approval before in other, other cases. This direction was just to have a conversation with Tommy. And if that went nowhere, then you could take this additional step. But our direction was just to have a conversation with him. And I agree he is in violation, but again, our direction was to have a conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Lanis Stockman.
So having said that, then, if that's my typical first action for any complaint, whether it's cars, or animals, or, you know, junk and debris, then how would you like to move forward? Because that is how I typically get a call, a first response from people. Unless I drive by, I, so, once we get a complaint, I will drive by or stop at the property to validate the complaint. And if I happen to see somebody out, great, I'll jump out, tell them who I am, and tell them what the situation is. You know, if there no, if nobody's home or whatever. And I would, you know, prefer to talk to people face-to-face typically too, but that is the first step generally, so I will need more specific direction, I guess, or maybe I didn't pay enough attention to your, your specific direction on that case.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayno.
But I also agree that we can't handle each case on an individual basis. We have to have a guideline on how we handle it, and we handle them all the same regardless of who it is.
Yeah, so, so my question would be, how difficult would it be to send a more generic letter saying a violation, a possible violation's been noticed, come to our attention, need to call the, the city offices, similar to, you know, these signs we put, if there's land use, call if you want information, your contractor say there's, there's been brought to our attention, and do something there where we can explain to them what the violation is. I think people can be a little more cooperative when they're dealt with on a personal basis, rather than, than a administrative notice. Is there a preliminary step that could be done that would even save the paperwork of this? And they don't respond, or they respond negatively, and you go with a citation. Here's what can happen, if you don't respond at this point in time, then we actually go with a citation, or with a notice, then go with a citation. Because it was a concern when we first started this, that, that it would become mechanical and administrative, and we still want to deal with people one-on-one where we can. Now, if we're getting so many administrative notices, that isn't possible, then we've got another problem on our hands.
Would you like me to draft an example letter for your review?
I would, if the council would like to see that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Something I, I've thought about over the years too, is to, again, to have it be on a more personal level, that when a complaint comes in, that we make an appointment with the resident, to have a conversation with them, and a planner and a council member go out and have a conversation with them, with the resident, and we can rotate alphabetically or however, through the council, so that they're seeing both city staff and an elected official wanting to work with them in regards to the issues at, at hand. And hopefully maybe then, you know, you know, people are, like you said, people are typically willing to work with us and stuff, but I think that gives it a more personal touch, and is, is a service to the residents. I, I don't know how other council members feel about making those site visits, but I think in the long run, that might help us with adherence to our ordinances, and help move processes along, the process along quicker, if they see that there's people that are, are willing to work with them, see if they're willing to work with them.
Is that, well, I guess we just have to coordinate regarding time. I mean, I typically do work into the evening, so after your work hours, or, you know, I, could be arranged.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
What I will, what I will do is, for the November meeting, is I'll do an RCA, and I'll do a draft of what I think it would look like, as far as, you work on your letter, and then I'll do a draft of an RCA as to, so when a complaint comes in, initial step would be that we'd have contact with them, we would set up an appointment, whether it's day or evening, we'll have to work on hours, and then rotate through the council members. And see if we can have that hands-on first, more, more person-to-person to see, and then track to see if that is of any benefit, maybe it, I don't know, maybe people won't like it, I don't know, but it's an opportunity to try something that I think is, and it's a way to reach out to the residents.
Okay.
And I do think the residents appreciate, you know, that the council doesn't just sit back and do things administratively. If we are willing to, to go out and work with the planner and with them on getting things done, we've had some success with that in a variety of situations, where there was more antagonism, and once we started working cooperatively, we've seen some progress. There are going to be those that don't care, and that's what we, we save the citation and the fines for. If you're getting no cooperation or just getting stalled, then, but I think that we've seen that, when we approach them collaboratively, we've had pretty good success.
Can we, or should we put the administrative enforcement section review kind of in with that, or?
We could, we could add, we've got that tri-fold flyer.
Uh-huh.
And, and I have, when I get complaints from people, I, Corey sent that to me, and when residents call me about an address, I make a copy of that, and I mail that to the address and say, as a neighbor, I just, you know, there's been a complaint about such and such, I want to give this to you, you know, and try to work on it. And I've not seen those addresses come through on our list.
Okay.
So, you know.
And I believe, Liz, what you were asking is, do we want to look at the whole process as part of this? Is that what you were saying?
Well, right, if we're going to have a different step one, yeah, we should change that.
So what's, what's the process flow, yeah, it would make sense to say.
Yeah, so it would be an ordinance.
What are the thresholds to move to?
Yeah.
I like the idea, if things are being sent out, and it's not ending up in your report, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's great, if you're heading it on. And it's not that we have to say in the ordinance that a council member's going along, but we want to say, try to meet in person or whatever, and then your policy can be, you know, separate. Sure, that's, that's fine. I just want to add that, I mean, generally speaking, I really don't have a problem with people, I haven't heard that many complaints, like, once in a while, somebody will say, oh, that letter kind of surprised me, or whatever, but generally, people just call and say, yeah, what's up? And, you know, and I'll say, yeah, do you mind if we meet on your property and just check it out? You know, maybe it's nothing, maybe it's something. So it hasn't, it hasn't been like everybody's petrified when they get it.
Well, it's made to get their attention, and I think it works, it gets their attention.
Yeah, in a way, yeah.
I mean, if you just put something out there really lovey-dovey, they're not going to respond, they're going to, and the garbage goes, you know? If you put something out, if you don't do something, this is potentially what could happen, and that's what that letter is. It's not happening yet, but here's what's going to happen, here's what you've been accused of being in violation of, and this is what can happen. Respond, and it should get their attention, and it's worked in the past, so.
And if we're not getting, getting a response, then we can revisit that, but, you know, I, I think that we, we look to be as cooperative and collaborative as we can upfront, and always reserve that. We can always get sterner if need be.
It might be nice to still include in the letter, you know, give them two weeks to call you or something.
Oh, I, I think there needs to be, time-bound.
Yeah, then you can move on to the next step, and you don't have to waste more staff time following up or whatever.
And again, you know, I don't know that, you know, the initial letter, as far as tracking it, you know, maybe that's something that, that our internal staff can do as well. You know, as we look at the process, we can say, this makes sense, it should only come from your office, this makes sense, it can come from the city offices and the towns. Put it on a particular file and say, okay, this one's been a couple of weeks.
Sure. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
And I, and I think that's a good suggestion, is having the internal staff, as Lori is getting more accustomed to how things are done and what our ordinances are, and she just went through and did that little revamp of the ordinances, I think this is good, not practice, but good background for her, to be able to stay current on that, and it would be at a lower billing rate, too.
Oh, I think it's great, if Lori can send the initial letter, basically a form letter, call the planner, you know, or whatever. Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, so then the other part of that, you had a question to the council for Does the city council want a site inspection at this point?
I think we should, if we were anybody else. Right, if that's the process, that we have a site inspection. Right, if that's the process, that we have a site inspection.
I think with the situation as it is, I think this would be appropriate to have somebody else either go along or do the inspection. We're looking basically to say, is he accurate with what he said on his animals? Are the exotics gone, and are the animals that he lists here what he's actually got there?
Right. You say you would like someone else to go along?
I do, yes. Be appropriate for somebody from the council, too. Experience it firsthand, you've been dealing with it, and you know what you anticipate.
Well, just let me know who then, and we'll figure it out, a date.
All right.
Unless you have any more questions on code enforcement.
All right, anything else on code enforcement, anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Lairs Stockton.
Well, before we leave planning section of the meeting, I'd like to say just a couple of words about the letter you received.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that before you left. A little vague to us, to tell us in what's going on there.
I'm going to try to be anonymous here. So, I received this letter, or the city did, yesterday, and basically being accused of losing a sale, a property sale for a resident. Both Andy and I were on the property, and it was quite a while ago, at least August, maybe even the end of July. So there was a potential buyer that was looking at a barn that they wanted to use for a possible wedding venue, and so they were obviously asking questions, you know, what do we have to do to the barn, and et cetera. So, I was just kind of listening and watching until they started asking me questions, and the realtor was there as well, and, you know, he didn't say anything to me when I was on the site about this lease agreement, or whatever he's referring to. Apparently, he didn't want me on the property, so the owner was not there at that time. Anyway, I really felt like it was, I was just doing my job and trying to help these folks out to understand what they had to do, if and when they bought the property, so, and they did ask me questions about, you know, can the house stay, does the house have to go, they were going to split a piece off, so we talked a little bit about the subdivision process. You know, we talked about parking for these weddings. The potential buyer did make a comment about the house and how much work it needed, and, you know, didn't think that maybe that that was in the cards at the same time as the barn, and even from a structural basis, the building official was kind of leaning toward, well, maybe the smaller milking barn would be a better choice, you know, for starters, because it needed less work. So, at any rate, I just feel like it was somewhat of a personal attack, and I will call the resident, and I really want them to know that I actually have, you know, played community development director, you know, in this role many times, and I've actually, since that, or since I was out there, I mean, I've called this resident directly and said, "I have someone that's interested in your property." You know, I've told at least eight or 10 people about it being for sale, and at any rate, I feel like he needs to know that I am on his side, so it's, you know, whatever I do, I think it is for the betterment of the city. So, at any rate, I'm sorry I had to receive it, and I will call that individual. And so, like I said, Andy was there, too, and he'd be glad to answer any questions, too. He was a little upset by it as well.
Well, I do know that you have brought that property to people's attention as being available. You mentioned it at county meetings, you've mentioned it in a variety of situations, in a positive light.
Yeah.
I don't know what the specifics are with this one, if they were asking code requirements for the type of activity, I mean, we've all had that, you know, "I want to do such and such here, is that possible? The ordinance say this, look at that."
Right, right, it's just facts, yeah. And ironically, about an hour before Corey sent it to me yesterday, I had spoken with another gentleman that was very interested in the property, and I was so excited about it, I actually called the realtor, and I said, "I really think this one's going to work." And I, but it's B, it's just a difference, and A, he wants to buy the whole property, and B, his experience, you know, he didn't blink an eye when I said frontage road and parking lot and rezoning or whatever, you know what I mean? So, it was, it sometimes is based on the person's background, too, and what, you know, everything, background, resources, experience, so, yeah, it's unfortunate, but I, anyway, I do really try, I give 150% to you guys, so.
That frontage road is scaring everybody away, though.
Well, I, this guy said that, you know, he understood it, and that he's been in that situation, so, I don't know, we'll see. I sent him some information, and they really shouldn't have to send or scare everybody. They really shouldn't. And especially if somebody buys that whole parcel and splits it up, I mean, that's a part of the process, street access, and the county is very willing to give us access temporarily, as they may need it, you know, if the corner goes first or whatever, but, you know, it really shouldn't be that scary.
It does, though.
Well, I've been invited to meetings on that property by the owner, the realtor, and potential buyers, and they didn't, they weren't flinching at the road, the concept plan there, they knew they have to have something long-term if they're investing in that corner. They know they need access. You know, some people have talked about continuing to rent out the house and the property, the problem they have is there's a lot of undeveloped land in that acreage, according to the type of properties that were being proposed. The other ones, I looked at it, and it was not the road that scared them, they knew they needed access, and their other developments of the type of commercial property they were looking to develop had the same thing in other communities. It's just it wasn't right for their business because of its positioning between Ramsey and St. Francis and the competition, so there are other factors that go into that. Certainly, the ones that I've been invited to sit in with, that hasn't been the issue. I think the reason they invited me in, just to say, "What's the city, how determined is the city to enforce this concept plan?" But it never even came up as an issue with the potential buyers. So I'm sure you can always find somebody who will not like the idea of a concept frontage road. We've certainly shown flexibility, if somebody comes in with a proposal that that's a hindrance, we've already shown flexibility in that area. I think it's known that that isn't going to hinder development. We want people to be aware that it could, when that goes to divided highway, be more limited access. If they choose to not do anything about it right now and develop anyway, we've worked around it, so.
I review site plans through the whole county, for the county all the time, and I review, I've talked to many people in them corners, and that service road concept that's in the comp plan, our comp plan, does scare people away. And you'll see a lot of gas stations that have been built, even down in the city of Ramsey, where they had full access onto the county road, and when the county came by and divided it, made it a divided road, and gas stations have since closed. They've sued the county over it. So it does make a big difference, they do want direct access to the county road.
And that was the point of this, having seen those businesses that go under because they don't have access, the whole point of this was to make sure that they weren't being short-sighted, that when the county does come and divide that road, they can still have access to their business. Those that do have it, and I'm experiencing Ramsey all the time, you're making U-turns on Highway 10, you're making U-turns on Bunker and Round Lake, on 47, to try and get back into primarily gas stations, but restaurants and gas stations, and it is a dangerous thing. And I know it does limit some access, and the idea was to, when you're developing, be aware that somewhere down the road, this could be divided, and your access is going to be limited, and you don't want to be one of those ghost stations sitting on the corner because nobody can get into it. But we also have been willing to listen, if somebody says, "I don't care about that, that's later, I want to develop now," I may or may not own the property when that happens. There's no concrete plan from the county yet to make that happen, and I want to develop, we've got one right over here. You know, they wanted release from it, we got it, so, so if it is limiting things, in my meetings with the property owner and the realtor, that hasn't been what's stifling them. There's other things that are factoring into that in this particular spot, and if we have others that are limited, I don't know, it's been brought to your attention, it hasn't been brought to other council members' attention, so maybe it's happening in the county, but we're not aware of it at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Lairs Stockton.
Just one quick thing, most of the people that I've found in the past that were interested in that parcel only wanted a piece of it, which makes a difference. I think it'd be very advantageous to work with this person, I hope he's serious, you know, to split it all up at once would be a great advantage, and, you know, not as scary. And we've been very flexible, saying that it can be a situation where you've got shared driveways, and just as long as there's another way to get in there, but I guess we'll see.
They want some direct access, though, they don't want their access to be a quarter or half mile down the road, and some of them, that's the way they perceive our comp plan, and sometimes the information that's been relayed to them, that's the way they have received it, and it makes a huge difference.
As to whether?
Whether they get direct access or not.
As to whether they buy it.
And then have processes, or future service road or package go down the road someday, so that if comes poorly and divided, they can go down and do a U-turn and come back to get to the gas station. But if they want direct access now, gas station on the corner, if you put a gas station on the corner now, and they can't get to, unless they go down the road a quarter mile to get into it, they're going to drive right by and go to the next one down the road.
No, I've been very, pardon me, Mr. Mayor, I've been very careful to tell people that you can't, you can have direct access now, you know, I mean, if they're the only ones going in, the county will give temporary access. I don't know, you know, that the city's going to require the entire frontage road to be built for one business, I mean, you may want to phase it, it just has to do for residential, so, you know, or even if it'll be a frontage road versus a shared parking, it may just be an easement situation like we have here, I don't know. But I'm, you know, yes, we have that plan, but I also say it's flexible, and I always say that the county has indicated that they will allow direct access, they're, you know, I don't think, you know, they don't want to prohibit a business from going in in a city, they realize, I think, the importance of that, but.
I would think that certainly any investor or businessperson worth their salt is certainly going to ask, you know, "How rigid is this?" If you look at a plan and say, "Oh, that looks like it might be a problem," and walk away, how interested were they really in doing something there? You know, I just, I don't see it as, if somebody's really interested, they're going to ask, and I've been at the meetings where they've asked. So, if they're walking away from it because it might be a problem, then I question how intentional they were on actually making a deal there. I do have a question on this. I see uncopy on that, did I?
That is your letter.
Okay.
It came in your name, but the letter was addressed to her, so.
Okay.
Weird.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Liz?
That is it, thank you.
Anything else for Liz? Thank you very much. All right, consent agenda, meeting minutes, it's 29th, September 7th, September 12th, September 18th, and 25th budget meeting minutes. All right, financial report, audited bills, I have a question, I thought when we moved our deadlines up, that we were going to be getting our invoices earlier as well.
No, that was never the intention. It was explained to you that the invoices would always be coming before the council meeting, because we need those extra few days in order to get the bills in the mail, because in a case like this week, we would have been getting stuff at the first of the month, and we get some bills that still come, and then we would be starting to get behind on bills, and then we start getting late charges on bills.
And let me clarify what I was saying, I was saying from our contracted services. So, and I remember the discussion, because Avrupi was saying, "Hey, if people don't get them in on time, they'll figure it out, because their payments will be a monthly."
That wasn't the intention or the impression that I got, they were still coming in at the same time, the other bills, so.
We knew that this packet, other than the contractors, but when you get $18,000 bills, you get $9,000 bills and $5,000 bills, and you're getting them the night before the workshop, it's pretty difficult, if you've got anything else going on that night, to get through that and ask reasonable questions. And I appreciate that what you did here, because the $18,000 one was a bit of a shocker to show the activity in this last month was significant. But what I recall, and I know the intention at the time, moving the deadline up, was can our contractors adjust their billing cycles, their invoice cycles, so that we can see them in enough time to actually ask questions, whether of you or of them directly, say, you know, "What is this?", so that we know when coming to the workshop, that those are reasonable. I think it, I find it difficult to get through that much detail in the evening when I'm coming off to work, and I've got a workshop the next day.
And that was.
And so I believe that when I made that recommendation back then, it was clear it was clearly understood because I remember Bob Rupi saying very particularly, if we can't get our bills in on time, we'll wait a month. And you do that too often and people will start being aware of it. We'll learn, we're adults. We're adults and we'll get our bills in on time. But I wanted to make sure we had time to properly review what we're signing off on. And so I don't know, being we have one contractor right here, how difficult that is to get them in earlier than...
It can't happen. I mean, this month ended on the 29th, the 30th on a Saturday. You know, the billing person can't do it till Monday morning or, you know, and she's doing all of PPC and she's doing Hawkinson. So I would, I would be okay with, you know, doing it a month behind if you want more time. But I'd rather keep, you know, September, bill all of September together instead of splitting it up and do like half of August and half of September. So I'm okay with, you know, whatever.
And, you know, we got Ramsey is for August. So they typically, you know, they get it to us in the month, but they're billing for August. So, and that's what you'd be indicating. You want to build the whole month, but if you want to stagger it so that the September comes in for our November review, it gives us time to look through it.
Right. And that's okay with me if you want to do it that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I understood that the workshop was the intent to go through the stuff with the packet. And then when you have questions, now you have, you got your billing on Wednesday, so you had no time to look at it, so now you have tonight that you've seen it. You'll have Friday, you'll have Saturday, you'll have Sunday, you'll have Monday. During that time is when I understood is when you guys are reviewing the stuff some for more and asking any additional questions. If you had further questions on Liz's bill and you didn't want to pay it, then you could hold off and pull that billing and she would still be the month behind. But I thought that was the intent of the workshop is to say, hey, you know, I didn't get a chance to look at this. I need further information before the council meeting. Because that's what you've been doing with everything else. So I don't see how that's preventing the bills from still coming in when it is because you've still got the time to ask further questions.
Yeah, and my understanding in asking for the information to be there a week at a time is so that we would have the ability at these meetings to ask the questions. Because yes, we, you know, we're not going to go through all those bills tonight. But if there were, and we have these, which we understand because of the billing cycle on all the rest of it, and the tens of thousands of dollars are there, we understand there might be some questions on that because we just got that last night or today. So then I'd say, okay, I have a question on this one, we can pull it out and look at it. But as far as the contracted services, those are much more significant typically in dollar amounts and in detail that can be questioned. And I think that it's reasonable to say, I've looked at this over the past couple of days. You know, I, and I have some questions that the councilmen say, yep, I had those same questions. We need additional information. You can, I can say, I've got questions here that you can answer. You can get answered before we come to the meeting and send it out to everybody. Jeff had a question on this one, like you did with the building inspector. You saw that there was probably going to be questions and you, you know, took the action to bring the information that you knew would be discussed. And that's what I was saying with the contracted services. When you're dealing with lawyers and planners and building inspectors and there's that much detail in there, I think that's appropriate to have ahead of time. So those questions can be fleshed out before this. These types of things, yes, there's some additional information we can discuss at this meeting or clear up. You know, and again, depends on how your weekend goes, how much time you're going to have to further investigate that. But with that much detail and that much money, I think it's appropriate to have more time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Matt.
I think it's just fine. I've gone through them and I'm fine with the way it's been operating. I, there's, you can skim through them pretty quick. Our staff has gone through it. If there's any mistakes, they catch it. So I don't, I think the way it's been working, it works fine for me anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I concur with you on the conversations that we had earlier because I also remember Attorney Rupi saying, if you don't get it in, you don't get it in. I like to be able to have the time to look at it. And I don't skim through them, I look at them. And I look up addresses and to check and different things like that. And I like to have them so that if I do have questions, I can have them to Cory. So if I do have a question before the council workshop, they can get answered before that. If not, I'm looking at it. Got it yesterday, didn't get a chance to look at it. Look, I'm going to go home tonight, tomorrow is a workday. So then if I'm looking at it, it's over the weekend. So then Cory comes in and she's got Monday and Tuesday to get answers. If we get it that week prior, there's additional time in there for council to look through it as much as they choose to look through it. And then ask questions and it gives staff the opportunity to get answers to those questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ritter.
Again, you know, it typically doesn't happen where we get a bill like that, you know, so it is an oddity. But again, if we get it, if we get it on Wednesday or even today for that matter, we have the workshop. What are we having council meetings for then? If we don't have those additional days to answer questions or go through some of the information that we have, what's the point of having the council meeting and the workshop separate? There is none, in my opinion. There's no reason why if Thursday night you come to the meeting and we just got to say, hey, you know, there's, I didn't have enough time to go through this, I want to be able to go through it. I may have some questions for Cory, you know, can we get those questions on Tuesday? If those questions still come up on Tuesday, there's no reason we can't pull that one particular bill out and question it. And if she has the answers, great, we can approve it. If she doesn't have the answers, we don't approve that one. Again, I think it's an oddity and I think otherwise, I'm at a loss why we go through this entire process on a Thursday night and come back on a Tuesday.
I think in the particular case of the contracted services, those bills are typically $5,000 to $20,000. And there's a lot of detail in those bills. You know, in addition to the, you know, we have anywhere from $45,000 to $95,000 in the audited bills that come through here. Again, we can ask questions about those, but I think the attention to detail, I agree. I don't skim them. I want to look at the detail and say, this makes sense and understand how it impacts our budget. And I don't know that that can reasonably be done after the meeting on, if we get it today and you're working during the day, it's pretty hard to look through that detail and have good questions today. To come up over the weekend and try and put something together, if you've got nothing else going on on the weekend, and have something ready for Cory on Monday to answer. I think it's appropriate to give Cory as much time to work with the contracted staff to get the answers and bring that here. Have you had questions about this? If we didn't have any questions, people say we didn't. The bills looked fine, nobody had any questions. If there were questions, we brought them to Cory and the answers are here for the group to figure out. Otherwise, it's really not a group discussion. If we're misinterpreting how the billing is being applied because we thought it was going to be this way and the rest of the council said, no, that's not it at all, it's only going to come out on Tuesday. And at that point, we end up having a whole nother workshop because there's a lot of detail that's now just coming out just before we vote. The intention here was, do we have enough information to vote? Try and make these meetings as short as possible saying, is there enough information? As we go down to the RCA's, is there enough information at RCA that everyone can vote? That's all the discussion we really need to have. Now I'd like some clarification, what were you asking for here? Okay, good enough, I can, I can, a good conscious vote. Or there's a detail missing here, if we have it by Tuesday, we can vote on it. If we can't get it by Tuesday, we should table it. But I think the difference is when things are, and it's not just an $18,000 one-off. It's not uncommon to have $8,000, $9,000 bills come through. And like I say, the city of Ramsey, you know, they're bringing through August bills for the October meeting. They gave it to us a week or two ago. We've had a chance to look that one through. And, you know, obviously Cory does a good job. When they come in, she sends them out, gives us a chance to look at them. But three of them just came in and a couple of them are significant size. So if it works for the contractors, and I say it's the request we would have, if it works for the contractors, and I understand you want to keep all your billings in one month. And so September 30th is on a Saturday and you've got one accountant or one bookkeeper doing your company and multiple cities and Hawkinson as well, okay? Then if it can be delayed a month and we get them, you know, with a couple of weeks, like we do with Ramsey, to me, I think we can do a more responsible job as a council. And if you don't need that much time, more power to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Stock.
Just a quick comment. I mean, I guess I'm really okay either way, but, you know, I remember one time when one of my invoices got pulled. And at that point, we had talked about, you know, I'm totally okay. Like, let's say you have questions on, you know, the Johnson house. Just pull that whole section of Johnson out, you know, might be $5,000 or $800 and just weigh down a part of it or, you know, I mean, I'm okay with that too, so whatever, you guys decide.
Well, I'd like not to have to surprise you at meetings, so you know what? We're pulling part of your billing out because that's your pay. And if we give you a chance to respond to it ahead of time, it's all cleared up. There shouldn't be any questions, there shouldn't be any pulling out.
You're worried about one item, or you're talking about making her wait a whole month for the whole thing?
Well...
I'm glad you're not on the county board because their meetings would take on forever if you're going to go through every line item bill like this. I mean, that's why you have staff to go through the bills to make sure it's right. We have staff in the office here and they go through and things are caught and corrected. I do go through them. I got mine, I picked my packet up Tuesday night, I did get through them. I just don't think we need to over micromanage.
Do you have that new packet Tuesday night?
I think the packets were in the mailbox Tuesday, because I...
Were all the invoices there?
A lot of the invoices were there, they were emailed to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan. As I understand it, the intention of the packets, moving dates up with the packets was to have the packet, if possible, as complete as possible. And if we need to work with our contractors to adjust it so that they can potentially get that packet to us sooner, then I think we just need to have that conversation with them to go, hey, let's get it in here. Because I, you know, it'd be nice to have it all in the packet instead of having emails coming, you know, a day or two later and then Cory can put it all together at once. And then it's just, it's there.
But the packet wouldn't be able to still come together all at once because there's still lingering bills that come through. And sometimes we have it, in our case like this month, that the workshop was on the fifth. And we're still usually getting bills, end of month bills, not the contracted services, but other bills that we know that generally don't get to the office until such and such date.
Packet of bills aside, we can work with the contractors to look and see if we can get their bills in sooner to be included in the packet.
And again, situations like this are going to happen pretty infrequent because of the way the month lays out. You know, you look at November, you know, by the time, you know, the month is done on a Tuesday. So yes, the contractors can have, you know, their information to Cory by the end of the week or should be available for that entire month. It's just, again, the way September laid out, it was, you know, it wasn't accessible. And so we are going to have that oddity, like, that's the thing that I'm saying.
So is it wrong for us to encourage our contractors to say, hey, we would like to have your billing in?
No, and I'm not saying that it's not, I'm saying, but there is going to be those oddities.
There may be some exceptions that we have to deal with.
That's what I'm saying.
But I'd rather have it in the packet so theoretically less work for Cory to have to deal with, okay, get it in, make more copies, send it out after the packets were already done and then send it out on the email again when it can be done as part of, as the packets getting put together in the first place.
I think that's a very good one.
No.
Yeah, pretty much. They get it all to us as fast as soon as it comes in. It's just, like Paul just said, the way this month's worked out, they don't do billing until Monday, it's pretty hard to get it there much sooner. It is what it is. They ain't like they don't want to get paid and they're not trying to send us their bill.
I don't know if we've had that conversation with the contractors to say, hey, this is how we'd like to have this together.
Yes, we have. We've had it at the council all year, a few times.
Regardless, I agree. If we can work with the contractors and say, hey, can you get it in so that Cory can get us the information? Great, but obviously we all have to understand, yes, there are going to be those odd ones.
So we'll have Cory ask contractors and see what their opinion is so that we know what we're working with. Is that ideal if they can stagger it, similar to what Ramsey does? That would be ideal, but let's see what they say.
And obviously Ramsey's got a lot more money floating around where they can wait a month to get theirs. Some of the other contractors don't have that luxury really.
I was just going to say, if you're going to do it, do it now because I have money.
And so will Andy, so let's do it right away. All right. So Cory will check on that and let us know. But yeah, if you want to start staggering right now since you've got money, this would be a good time to start.
I'm not a good saver, so I just happen to have a non-shopping month.
All right. Mr. Settle's resignation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I'll move on Tuesday that we authorize staff, our internal staff, to advertise for members of any committee that has openings on it.
Do you say all committees, Mary?
Oh, yep, any committee that has an opening, yep.
Yeah, he's a big loss. He was an excellent planning and zoning member.
Yeah, he did a lot of research and training on his own and he brought a lot from working with Al Krevon, their comp plan. He had a good understanding and a nice level demeanor.
Yeah, he asked real good questions and, yep, very good.
Well, we do wish him the best. All right, collaborative purchase of Adobe Acrobat Pro.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan. I think that sounds like, knowing that typically a software vendor comes out with a release every two years, it sounds like that should suit our needs to go ahead and get the three-year license.
Oh, then watch Cory go to town.
PFF machine.
All right, any other questions on that one? All right, 1.6, current practice of accepting anonymous complaints.
Mr. Mayor. As the RCA says, we currently have a practice of accepting anonymous zoning, housing, and road complaints. I would move that effective October 11th, the city of Nauvada no longer accepts anonymous... I would move that effective October 11th, the city of Naula no longer accepts anonymous zoning, housing, and road complaints, and that all information regarding the complainant be handled according to current data practice statutes. And in addition, the internal staff is directed to change all references and city documents associated with the complaint process by November 1st of 2017.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettner.
You do have to accept complaints on roads and stuff without names, because if somebody calls in and says there's a stop sign down, and you say, hey, and they don't give their name, or whatever their road complaint is, and you don't act on that because they didn't give their name, that's a reliability to the city.
That's not a complaint, that's a notification. When I call Joe and say, there's trees blocking a stop sign at a certain section, it's just a notification, he goes out and trims the trees. If somebody's saying, I don't like to have to stop at this intersection, I'm complaining about the city putting it up, that's a complaint. But I think that damage and, and safety issues regarding traffic or road issues, signage and things like that, is not a complaint. I think somebody's saying, you know, complaining specifically about how somebody's performing their job, or, you know, other... Yeah, I can see the idea here is, we want people to, again, as we said before, be cooperative. And if your neighbor's doing something that is a problem, I would expect, the first thing you do is talk to your neighbor. I don't want to become the one that, the city where, we don't have to do anything to work with our neighbors, because we can just call the city and somebody else will take care of it. I think the first thing you do is talk to your neighbor. And if there's a problem that you see, you bring it to their attention. And if they say, I don't care, and you know it's a violation of the ordinance, then I think people should be able to put their name on it, just, we wouldn't bring anybody into court and say, somebody accused you, and you probably did wrong, but we're not going to tell you who accused you. And there's no other situation where we do that.
Well, legally, you can't tell them who complained.
No, but I'm saying that, that we don't accept them. We, you know, the council doesn't disseminate that information, but people need to sign their complaints. You know, again, it says right here that we have to apply, abide by the current data practice statutes, so that you can't disseminate the information, you can't post it publicly. But the people should have to sign their complaints when they turn them in. I think the case earlier, we were told the now-then resident complained, but everybody says, we don't know who it is, it was anonymous. But we do know, even though they're anonymous, it was a now-then resident. Well, if they're anonymous, how do we know that? And it's important that the council understands the data practices. You have that information available to you, but you can't be telling other people that information. But I think that's, you know, incumbent on all of us to know the data practices on that, starting with staff and going through council. But I do think it's appropriate to encourage people, try and do something cooperatively first.
Mr.... Sorry.
Leonard Stockman.
Yes, just my two cents worth. A, people don't want to narc on their neighbors. I can tell you, after six years here, almost every time I go to somebody's property that has had a complaint, they will say, well, such and such down the street, they're doing the same thing. Why don't you go to their front door? And so then I explain the process, that we act on only complaints, we get written complaints. And the other comment would be that we are going to get notes dropped in that mailbox that don't have a name on them. So more so than whether we accept the anonymous complaint, is whether or not you're going to act on an anonymous complaint. And I think if you act on one, you need to act on all of them. But yeah, people, you know, when I tell people they have to do it in writing, they're like, nope, nope, I'm not going to sign my name to that. But they're not afraid to tell me that, basically.
Well, and that's my point, you know, I think we've become a society where I don't want to own it, dump it on Liz, dump it on the city. The city can incur the cost, the city can, the mayor may not be right, I'm going to complain, and you hear that all the time. Well, don't bother me, because I can show you 16 other people in the city are doing the same thing. But again, if we encourage people to be cooperative, and then you say, you know, he'll know it's me, because I'm the one who went over and asked him about that issue. And I'll put my name on it, because I think the city needs to do something about it. It is unfortunate. But again, as a city that has determined to be complaint-driven, I think it's important to also own up to the complaints. If you're going to say something, try and work it out first.
I think it's important to own up to it also, but it's just not going to happen all the time. So I guess you just have to decide, yeah, how you want to handle it.
Well, and it doesn't happen all the time, it will still happen some, and if it reduces our, our costs associated with code compliance, because people are obviously more willing to tolerate it than say something about it, that...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ritter.
Then in my opinion, under this situation, if a resident comes to a council member and makes a complaint, we shouldn't act upon that complaint, because that...
I think the council member's responsibility would be that we have a complaint form, and here's how you do it.
Yeah, I, again, agree. We recommend to them, you know, go to the city office, fill out the complaint, but, you know...
Because to, you know, it's the same thing, they're asking Liz to carry it forward for them, or a council member to carry it forward. And they can, they certainly can, as council members, we expect that people are going to vent to us. Are they filing a complaint? If they're filing a complaint, the city will take action on it. If they're venting, we can...
Well, and again, I'm just saying, we have acted on complaints that were brought to council people in the past, and I'm saying, based on this, that no longer will happen.
That's the way I read it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all under the same understanding on that. And again, I, if anybody would, and it comes to me, I, same thing, I'll say, no, go talk to Cory, fill out a complaint, and we'll address it then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I was trying to look at the policy, and I believe there was some exception for if it was anonymous, but it was a public safety issue, then, I know there's something around that, that might have to be addressed. I just don't remember, have it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I...
If that would, if that, you know, if that comes into play...
Okay, so if you can research that, um, a public health issue. I think a lot of things that end up being nuisance, or irritations, or neighbors are mad at each other and they're using the city to get back at each other, I think that there's certainly, it's reasonable to say, if there's a public health or public safety, imminent public safety issue, we don't want to not get that information. I think if it's road conditions, signage or things like that, certainly want to be aware of a sign down, or something like that. If it's the conditions of the road themselves, I want to complain about how my road was graded, but I don't want my name known. Again, it's not appropriate for anybody on your office staff or council to share that outside of that, you know? If somebody has a concern about their roads, and it's legitimate, and they put their name on it, I don't, I don't know that, that that goes to Joe or Eric. Again, because you want to make sure nobody has concerns about any consequences or repercussions. But if the council sees that the road conditions are such, that the complaint's valid, then it's our job to professionally deal with that and say, here's what we're going to do about it. But I wouldn't want anybody approaching them directly. Use the form, and between Cory and Lori and the council, that's as far as it can go. And it's our job to make sure it doesn't get any further than that. Anything else on that?
So going to change that request. For council action, to mention the public safety.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'll look it up then.
Okay. I would also then just, in here, as part of the requested council action, is that the staff provide to the council what the current data practice statute is, so that we have that for reference.
And you signs.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, we had Councilmember Ritter got, obtained one quote for warning lights, and Joe got another quote from safety signs. The quotes are attached. I was kind of surprised that the quotes came out a lot less than they did last time. Whether, I know it came up last time, you know, whether or not we do or don't need sandbags, but if we took out the sandbags through safety signs, the cost was $976.40 for four signs.
They're charging that much for sandbags?
Yeah.
Really good sandbags.
Thirty-two. Well, they wanted eight per sign.
Eight bags?
Eight sandbags per sign?
Yeah, thirty-two total, at $4.90 each.
I would say that one has been down there at Huggies for two years, or three years. It's got at least four sandbags on it, but...
So it'll be two sandbags per...
Per leg?
Per leg.
You'd probably want that, yeah.
Yeah, in the wind, yeah.
It'd be nice to see the design of the sign, the letter size and stuff, I mean, this information's pretty vague.
Do we want mockups?
Yeah, just, it'd be nice to know, to see what the sign looks like, and what size, are they both quoting two-inch letters, or what size letters are they, or...
Well, yeah, the biggest thing, like you said, you know, obviously, depending on the processes, are they doing it the same, you know, what kind of paper?
Yeah, the sheeting type, is it diamond grade, or is it high intensity, or is it engineering grade? That makes a, that's a huge difference.
You have some...
Well, I know warning lights, they got, they do it all on, it's just one sheet, rather than the individual letter. So I don't know if that's, you know, safety science does it too.
I know the copy's hard to read on this one, I don't remember what was on the actual form.
Just the different sheeting, I mean, the actual sheeting that goes on at DG is a higher quality, it'll last longer, it's more reflective, engineering grades, going to fade quicker, it's not going to last as long. I mean, so underbid on things, that could be, kind of, if I want to use them, that could be a big variable, maybe that's why the prices changed so much, this one, I don't know, this one.
Are they always reflective, or is it extra different?
They're typically always reflective, even engineering grades. You know, your newer signs, like your stop signs and stuff on the highway, they're really reflective now, it's almost too bright.
Yeah.
Because they're DG, they're diamond grade, they're...